Would you all please rise to the House of the County Prayer, all of us, please believe. Again, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in law, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All the children of the nation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to remind all speakers to please state your name and your reasons for holding residence, and we will give you three minutes to speak. First is Terry Penlot.
Good morning, Terry. Good morning from Butler Township. I could stand here this morning and talk actual facts about Sonny View and the proposed contract, the voodoo economics that goes on, et cetera, but it's like talking to a brick wall. Mr. McCary or Mr. Pinkerton only inform the taxpayers what they want them to hear. Our local non-bias newspaper only prints what Mr. Bodenmecker feels the public needs to hear. I guess freedom of the press doesn't apply for other evil. You two apparently do charitable work for the Shriner's, the Redderie, all that. When was the last time you did any charitable at Sonny View? In the three years that I've worked there, I've seen Mr. McCary one time, and I've seen Mr. Pinkerton there two, maybe three times. He was there for light-up night for the residents over the holidays, and you just stood in the corner. You should have volunteered to play Santa for the residents because you certainly didn't allow me to do it when I was asked to do it at the last minute. Anyhow, it's the holidays, obviously, and I'm not going to get my Christmas wish for our proposal to get signed, but at least now, I'm going to get a 3% raise after January 1st, and yes, I'm still only going to pay 1.5% for my wages and health care, at least until the railroaded sale is final. After the sale is done, I hope you two will be proud of yourselves. You two have wasted taxpayer money on studies, appraisals, on selling Sonny View when all you had to do was read our proposal in return to the table. By the way, Mr. Pinkerton, two things. Number one, long-term. What is your definition of long-term? We, the Union, wanted a four-year extension. You guys only wanted a two-year extension. That's not long-term. 2% raise on our contract for 2014, 2015, I'm sorry. I'm sure that had you agreed to return to the table, we could have negotiated that wage to a lesser amount if zero raised, but that's okay because according to you, we as signed you don't deserve anything that we'd get anyhow, more professionalism from our commissioners. Anyway, enough about that. In seven days, we celebrate the birth of our Lord and spend time with our loved ones and friends. I hope you all have a wonderful holiday. Thank you.
Charles Tanner.
Yeah, I'm Charles Tanner Pearl from Butler Township, one way to drive. Thank you, Mr. Penlot, for your remarks. I'm speaking in behalf of Sonny View, and I understand that there has been a proposal submitted to the governing board that is not being considered by the board or by the commissioners, and I think this is what you indicated. My, the plan to sell Sonny View, I'm wondering what is the greater motivation on the part of the commissioners to do with that lump sum of money that is being received as a result of that sale? I mean, I think that question is really the underlying part of your vote, which, you know, the privatization of nursing homes might be considered a horse and, you know, the public operation of nursing, it might be considered a horse and buggy idea, but perhaps it's more of the times in which money is cheap and hedge fund people can gather up enough money to buy out the public facility that has been developed and paid for over a century. Who is to say that the public nursing home is to make a profit? It is a service of our county, as much so as the Sheriff's Department back here. We don't talk about privatizing the Sheriff's Department, but it might be there's maybe a million dollars there that you could gather together. The Sonny View's operating cost is $21 million, and I understand that their revenue is 20, they missed it by about 5%. Doing some study on that, I see in the state of New Hampshire, Belknap County, Belknap County, turned down the suggestion of privatization, and in that case, they were, there were 10 counties in New Hampshire, 10% of their budget was going to be the, to go toward the continued support of the nursing home. The point is 10%. Here in Butler County, we have 1/2 of 1%, and who's to say that that should not be a public service in our, for our community, for our county?
We should realize, three minutes, if I can tell myself, sir. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Peggy Abelson.
Morning. Peggy Abelson, Mid-6 Township. First, I'd like to wish Jack McMillan all the best in his upcoming retirement. I can honestly say it's been a pleasure to work with you, and don't forget to send pictures from the color majority. First, if you're looking for a stocking sufferer, a great gift is an Alameda Pool Pass. Pool passes can be purchased during the month of December at this calendar rate. For more information or the purchase of your pool pass, contact the Park Office at 724-284-5383. Saturday, November 30th is Small Business Saturday. It's a shopping day to celebrate and support small businesses. Why not make every day a support your local business day? Small businesses are the heart of the community, and often their owners play an active role in both community and economic development. Since today is December 18th, there is only six days of small business shopping days left. This time of year is a great way for you to give back and say thank you to your local proprietors. Next, local food banks are in need to be replenished, not only for the holiday season, but for the whole year. If you find it in your hearts to be able to support the food bank, please do so immediately. Lastly, VOICE, which is our victim outreach air vengeance center for victims of domestic violence, they're accepting gifts and are needed gifts so that families will have something under the tree for the holiday season. Butler is a community who supports those in need. If you're able to help by purchasing gifts or adopting a family for VOICE for the holiday season, please contact them at 724-283-8700, or 724-776-5910, which is the Cranbury office. Thank you, and have a holiday, a great holiday season.
Mark Podnitzky.
Good morning. Good morning, again. It's my second time speaking this morning. I wish our job would put the salary board on, that was quite interesting, it's really caused some problems, but really, when the average worker, probable workers, just making the same as what they made in 2001, I can't, I can't support, you know, and I realize the difference between union and non-union, but that's, I don't know, that's a tough one. I did want to thank, we're going to talk about two people that aren't getting paid here. I wanted to thank the two volunteers for the jury commissioner position. They're going hell without bed for December. I thought that was great. I talked to Judge Durr about that in the hallway one day. He was very nice, nicely apologized to me. He said, "I'm sorry you got picked for jury duty when you weren't supposed to." It wasn't his fault, obviously, but that was very, very nice of him, I thought. And he was very nice to answer a couple of my questions. One of them was, "How did you become president judge?" I didn't know. I don't know if anybody else knows or not, but he's the longest-serving judge in Butler County, that's the reason he is. He said he was elected, I believe, in 1992, if I remember right. I'm really about the rest of the morning, so, okay, hey, thanks, guys.
Mark, can I ask you a question? Who are the two volun-- I apologize, I don't know this. Who are the two volunteers that took over the--
I don't know, it was in the paper, I was going to write it down, and I forgot.
Bill Patterson, Toronto.
Oh, yeah, that was great.
Jack McMillan.
Well, I, I don't know if three minutes is time to express appreciation, probably three hours wouldn't give you enough time to express appreciation to the, to the public, the taxpayer, to this board, as well as earlier boards of commissioners, to my many friends and the rebel offices, department heads, and just the casual mic custodian that comes in and empties my wastebasket every night. It's been a good run, I'm delighted to be saying adios, but I've stood at this podium many, many times, and I've had to say no on more than a few occasions and face the consequences, but I've always believed that the service one renders as a public official is to the public, and that must be, and must always be, the ultimate and only reason for that service. Accolades from others and pats on the backs and seeing your pictures in brochures by organizations and agencies who require funding with taxpayer dollars should not, and mostly does not, I believe, affect individuals' judgment, but ultimately, as a public official, you need to be able to say no. If you can't say no, become a greeter at Walmart. And that's the way it is for me today, and I do appreciate everything and the good and warm congratulations and thank yous I've been receiving over the last several days. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'd like to say this, you know, Jack and I, I probably, there's a good chance that Jack's office wasn't so open and honest when I was exploring county government, then I might not be sitting here today. They were very open with the information, and I really appreciate that, him and his office staff. And look, I agree with Jack 75 or 80% of the time, and that's really a good thing. That's, that's a high, you know, we're both fiscally conservative, and that's, nobody's going to agree 100% of the time, but we have the discussions, and Jack will sure as hell tell you what he thinks. Jack's like a, a lot of times he's like a bulldog on a pork chop, and sometimes I've been to pork chop, but that doesn't bother me. You know, I, I really respect that, and he hasn't held a grudge against me, and I appreciate that too, but without Jack's office, and Ben Holland doesn't know this yet, but he's a very lucky man, because Jack has a wonderful office and people that work there, very diligent, and he's going to be in for a pleasant surprise, so I thank Jack for his service, and I'm sure a lot of the community will agree with that. Thank you very much, Jack.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's all for public comments, sir.
Okay, we have votes from December 2nd, December 4th, and December 10th. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good.
Yeah, no, no business this morning, and no conculinations, so moving on to the business, first we have an announcement from District Attorney.
Morning, commissioners. I'm here this morning, I'm not asking for a vote on anything. I'm here to announce the creation of the Butler County Prescription Medication Dropbox Program. Prescription drug abuse has become an epidemic in Pennsylvania, and Butler County is not immune from that, but we have prescription drugs readily available and medication or in our medicine boxes, medicine cabinets in our homes, just about every home in Butler County, and unfortunately, there are people in our community who will take those drugs and abuse them. Prescription drugs can be a gateway drug to heroin, and we see a lot of heroin in Butler County also. So the Pennsylvania District Attorneys Association secured 250 medication drop boxes that would be distributed throughout Pennsylvania. Butler County was able to secure seven drop boxes that are now securely located in their locations in Butler County. The medication drop boxes are very similar to a United States mailbox, where an individual can take their prescription medications, drop them into the box, and then the door will close like if you put a letter into a mailbox, so that they cannot be accessed by the public, they can only be accessed through the lock, who are in the front of the box. The boxes are located, three locations here in the immediate Butler area, the Butler City Police Department, the Butler Township Police Department, and in the lobby of the Butler County Prison. We also have boxes securely located at the Slipper Rock Police Department, the Cranbury Township Police Department, the Penn Township Police Department, and the Saxonburg Borough Police Department. We tried to put these boxes in convenient areas for the entire county, so that if someone has medications, they can have a place in close vicinity to where they reside where they can take these drugs. The drop boxes are completely anonymous, so you don't have to go in and tell the, tell the police department to dropping them off, you can simply take the medication in, drop it into the box, and you're on your way. So we are hoping that by doing this, we can, we can do a number of things. We can take unused and unwanted prescription drugs off the streets in Butler County, and so we don't have people addicted to those medications abusing them. We can also provide a safe way to get rid of these medications, and a lot of people flush the medications down the commode, and that is about the worst thing you can do because it ends our water supply. So this gives people an opportunity to get rid of these drugs when they don't want them anymore, and then we will then collect them and destroy them with our other methods. So that's why I'm here today, I wanted to announce that if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. If the public has any questions about these drop boxes, you can call my office at 724-284-5222. You can visit the police departments that I, I announced here this morning, and I'm sure they can answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Rich. That's a great program.
I'd like to say this, Rich, I, I made the mistake, 15 years ago, I had a back tumor when I was operating, when they gave me OxyContin, and I did flush mine down the toilet because I, I just didn't think about it, but you're really, it's so important to our environment not to do that, you know, so I applaud the governor's program here, and I mistakenly did that myself, you just don't know, and it was a while ago, but I, I really think that's important when your kids fish in pot, that you need to eat the fish, and then it gets in your bloodstream, so, thanks for doing that program. That's all I have. Thank you.
Next, under Emergency Services, 911, Steve Vice House.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Dave.
I am asking for approval today of two items. They are related. Item number one is approval to enter into a contract with Priority Dispatch to replace our Emergency Medical Dispatch program. The current system we have is no longer supported nor accredited. This system that we are looking at, that we would like to purchase, is a nationally-recognized program, is accredited through all the governing bodies. The price for that is $86,978. It is a budgeted 2013 line item. Out of that money, $48,485 is eligible for reimbursement under the wireless funding. This program is the program that our dispatchers use for pre-arrival instructions for medical calls, so it helps the public to help their loved women themselves in the medical emergencies. I'm asking you for approval for that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, those in favor say aye.
I'd just like to say, I think this, this is really a great, and we were briefed on this extensively, and him and, what was it called? Ron, 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 yeah, him and, they briefed us on it extensively, and I really concur with this, it's a great idea. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, no, Mr. McCary.
Item number two I have is related to item number one. This is an approval of a quotation from our current CAD vendor, Imperator Dispatch vendor, which is in Interim. That's the system we use for the actual dispatching side of 911, for $18,900 to integrate our new Emergency Medical Dispatch program into our CAD system, so our, all of our data would dump seamlessly, and all of our record keeping would be in one place, so I ask for approval on that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, no, Mr. McCary. I ask that may be excused if him or the business--
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Next, under the Treasurer's Office, Diane Walker.
Good morning, Treasurer. This morning, I'm asking the board to a tender agreement with a company called Govolution, which is located in Arlington, Virginia, and what they do is they work with the RBA system, which is a system that the county currently uses for taxes, and I want to go through Govolution to be able to have an online present, a payment screen for those folks that I collect taxes for directly, so they can go online to make their payments for their taxes for current taxes. The municipalities are the City of Butler, Calvary Borough, Valencia Borough, and the Sunday. There is no cost to the county for this agreement, and it's just something that I've had on my plate that I would like to offer to the taxpayers for those who like to make their payments online.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Mr. McCary.
May I take one moment to wish the controller well?
Sure.
Well, I, I want to congratulate Jack on a very colorful, sometimes wonderful career here at the county. I've had a period of working with Jack for some 14 years, and we had a great relationship between our two offices over that time period, and I want to thank Jack because he spent much time with me on the pension work, explained many things to me on how that pension and actual aerial science works, so I do appreciate the time you--
You've been a good student.
Well, thank you, Jack.
And a quick study.
Well, and also, like he alluded, he made sometimes not very popular decisions, he made tough decisions, and I can remember one time, he said he wasn't elected to be liked, he was elected to make hard choices, I mean, hard decisions, and I've also, I've read where controllers, those types of people, they're paid to look at things with a jaundice eye, and we need those people to help keep everything in check, so I do congratulate you on your career here, Jack, and I appreciate the time that you spent with me, and I wish you all the best in your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Next, under Butler County Prison, Warden Schaefer.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
I'm here this morning for a secret approval of the 2014 training agreement with BC-3 as the recommendation of the prison board. It is for $6,260, and that is the budgeted item.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'd like to say this, I really, it means a lot, and I know that it means a lot to the board too. BC-3 is working in conjunction with the prison on this, and I just think we're so lucky to have these facilities as close. Everybody has to, all the individuals in the prison, all the employees have to do this, it's mandatory, but I'm really so thankful that BC-3 is there for us and is working with us on this issue. I applaud them, okay?
This will be the second year, and this past year, 2013, it worked out very well, so that's why we're receiving to extend that agreement.
Okay. Maybe, go ahead.
I believe you need a vote on that.
Oh, sorry, that's what we did. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
With Warden Schaefer here, we wanted to take an opportunity of something that you made prison board aware of yesterday, which is the award that has been awarded to the prison from the Department of Defense and the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve. And with your permission, I'd like to read the citation.
Yes, please do.
This is from the Employer Support of Garden Reserve. It honors Butler County Prison. It is the 2013 Secretary of Defense Employer Support Freedom Award in recognition of exemplary support of the Garden Reserve employees, and this is a recognition of the prison's efforts to reach out to our veteran population in terms of hiring for positions at the prison.
We do, I get many applications every day down there. Everybody's looking for work, obviously, and so of course, we do like to give special consideration to our veterans, and we have a quality staff down there, and a lot of our veterans are working out great, so it's, it's a two-way street, it's been working for us, and obviously it works out for them as well, so.
I think this works in conjunction with the perpetuology you've done here a few weeks ago that you brought to us, because you're hiring good people.
Yep.
You're able to get--
I would say I'm one of these Warden in the state, and I have a great building down there, and I have a great staff, so, they kind of make it easy.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay, now, excuse?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to move up on the agenda, the Children and Youth Agency, and then follow with the rest of the Human Services items. Joyce, same.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rich.
I have several contracts for your consideration, several of them are renewals, so I want to just start with them real quickly. The first is Adelphi Village, second is Clover Psychological Association, MHY Family Services, and Outside In. There are a couple of new contracts included in this list, two, there is one, there are two, with two separate attorneys, Leland Clark and Maura Columbia, and we are contracting with them to assist us with our administrative review process that we had to start in response to a federal lawsuit that was filed against another county children's agency, so we are going to change our processes and align with that. And then, lastly, is the Butler County Alliance for Children, and I have to say, I was so excited about doing this presentation today because of the great article last night, but that Hillary Board vote, what it says to my management staff, I just can't get over it, because those guys are some of the hardest-working people. They take on the stress of having to decide whether to leave a child in a home or remove a child from a home, and to not get the same raise that their staff gets is just so demoralizing. I apologize, and I don't want to take away from this CIC, so I just want to take a deep breath and move forward, because today is such a huge day for child welfare across the state. As we speak, Governor Corbett is at the Child Welfare Training Center announcing all the new legislation that has passed, that he is signing. He's signing the new legislation as a result of the task force. And one of the other recommendations from the task force was that each county start their own Child Advocacy Center, and that's what I'm here for today, and it's been so remarkable because one of the goals that we had was to try to coincide the start of ours with the announcement of the legislation. Well, to actually have it happen on the exact same day is, is like, that's really a good plan. So my last contract request is for us to help support this agency, because I think it certainly is going to be an asset to this community, and one of the things that I'm so excited about with this is that this is not, this is going to be a community effort. It is not a children and youth effort, it's not a county effort, it's a community effort, and I think it's going to be one of the most exciting things that's happening in this community for a very long time. I do have some talking points, just so that you can understand a little bit more about what an advocacy center does, and, again, I ask for your approval of all those contracts.
Joyce, just as a point of administration, let's deal with these, not necessarily separately, but since you have some news, new contracts, some amendments, and some that are a little bit different, if you group them appropriately for the votes.
Okay, that would be appreciated. Let's start then with the renewals, and again, I'll reiterate those. The Adelphi Village contract, the Clover Psychological Association contract, the MHY Family Services contract, and the Outside In contract. Those are all renewals.
I'll make the motion, except-- Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, Mr. McCary. Motion carries.
And the new ones, I actually failed to mention one, the two attorneys and also one just with Western Psychiatric Institute Clinic, and that is just for a child-specific contract on one juvenile probation client. So that's, that, that's my other new one.
I'll make the motion. There's four new ones?
Three.
Well, you didn't mention Butler.
Two, two attorneys.
Well, the new one, oh, I'm sorry, yes, the Butler County Alliance for Children is a new one. I was thinking we were going to do that one separate.
Okay, we have four new ones.
Four new ones, yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve these new new ones? Is there a second? I'll second it. Is there discussion?
Yeah, discussion. Did we RFP these two attorneys? And the question I have, did we RFP them and how they were cho, how were they chosen and how much do they make an hour?
Uh, no, we did not RFP them, just like the contract we did for the review officer for this process. We did not have time. We will be looking at a, a, a unlimited contract with them through the end of the year and then we'll, we'll see, first of all, whether the state comes out with new guidelines of how we are to handle these cases. And then, but if July first, whichever comes sooner.
Oh, we will.
And they will be paid, what they're paid now is parent's attorney in the dependency court, which is sixty dollars an hour.
Okay, so they work for, uh, in another place at now?
They do, well, they have, they're all private attorneys, but they do have appointments with juvenile dependency court to represent parents in the juvenile dependency court.
Okay, okay, so you do have, and just so if we vote yes on this, it's two, July, or, um...
Through, through, through June thirtieth.
Through their fiscal year.
Fourteenth, a fourteenth, okay. Okay, thanks, Joyce.
All right, any other discussion? Those in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, under Human Services, uh, the remainder of Human Services items will be presented by Ann Brown.
Good morning, Commissioner. First item I have is asking your acceptance of our Emergency Solutions Grant from the Department of Behavioral and Environmental Development. You had approved a application back in July, and we've just been awarded the grant in the amount of two hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Ask your approval for acceptance on that grant.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Opposed, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, ask your approval over contract with Catholic Charities to administer this Emergency Solutions Grant. They will provide treatment as well as rental assistance. Ask your approval of that contract.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I have two contracts regarding the Help Choices Program. Uh, the first is with Southwest Behavioral Health Management. They are a management corporation that provides extensive oversight for those six counties that we have brought in. And the contract will be effective from January first, 2014 until December thirty-first, 2017, which would correlate to the same time period as our contract with CPW for this program. Ask your approval of the Southwest Behavioral Health Management contract.
Make your motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, ask your approval of the contract with Value Behavioral Health of Pennsylvania. This is the, um, contract that handles the, contract with all the providers to provide the behavioral health services for the medical assistance clients. The contract also is January first, 2014 through December thirty-first, seventeen. Ask your approval of that contract.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I have some contracts and amendments for fiscal year thirteen, fourteen. The first is with Catholic Charities, it is our home again, home program. Then I have a contract with Community Health Clinic. It is for psychiatric medication management. Then I have some contract amendments. The Arch of Butler County for the supportive housing and supportive employment program. Center for Community Resources for our mental health service management, as well as the Help Choices medical component, and the Alliance for Nonprofit Resources, the certified investigation and crime transportation for our intellectual disability population and consumer stabilization fund program. Ask your approval of those contracts and amendments.
Can we do this in one motion?
Yes, I believe they're all contract amendments, is that correct?
There's two contracts, the first two are contracts.
Then I would suggest a new, new contract.
Ask your approval of the contract.
New contracts, here, which ones?
The Catholic Charities and the Butler County Community Health Clinic.
Okay, is your motion to approve those two contracts?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And ask your approval of the Arch of Butler County, the Center for Community Resources, the Alliance for Nonprofit Resources contract amendments.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to motion. I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And last, I ask your approval of some German alcohol contract amendments effective December first, 2013. These are rate changes to have the rates coincide with the value behavioral health rate that we're just granting. It is the Arch of, Arch Manor, Danley Links, Gateway Recovery House Center, Highland House, Renewal Treatment, Turning Point, and Twin Lakes Center. Ask your approval of those contract amendments.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, under Area Agency on Aging, Beth Carroll.
Good morning. I have two items for your consideration this morning. The first item, we're requesting the board's approval for a contract amendment with a food provider, Nutrition Inc., to provide snowy day boxes for individuals who receive option services and home delivered meals. These boxes would contain items that consumers would use in case of a snow-related emergency, uh, have non-tertiary food items, a flashlight, blanket, slippers, items that would be needed to sustain them a day or two if they can have electricity or the home delivered meals provided, was able to bring their meals to them. Butler County has been providing approximately two hundred boxes to the consumers who are deemed at risk, the cost of each box is eighty-one dollars. There's no county funds involved. They would be delivered mid-January to the consumers.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that. Now, Beth, I have a question. Do they request those or how do they do?
If they're receiving option services or they're receiving home delivered meal services, it would be part of their service plan.
Oh, okay, so everybody gets one unless you say you don't need it?
If you're in one of those programs.
Oh, okay, which are they again? I'm sorry.
The home delivered meal program and the options program.
Okay, okay, thanks.
The second item is...
Wait, wait, we didn't...
I'm sorry.
Those in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The second item, uh, we're requesting the board's approval to issue an RFP for major and medium services. The agency has experienced an increased need for moderate to major home support for consumers who wish to remain in their homes. This service will provide service for those who are most in need. The funding is strictly for, from the PA Department of Aging and no county funds are involved. The service will be spring cleaning, some housekeeping services, and some mid-to-moder assistance in the protective service divisions for individuals with supporting disorders. Uh, this funding, we have a special funding that will, um, be through the 2014 year and, uh, we're requesting their approval for, for our RFPs.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Make the motion.
Next, under Assessment, Chris Savitzer.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, Rachel. Um, I'm here to ask for approval to enter into a contract with President Company for an appraisal that is going to, going to court. Okay, we have, um, a professional service group that they've been, but there's conflict with, they've been approving it going to court. Um, so I ask for a recommendation to be giving to President Company. The amount of the contract is three thousand dollars for the appraisal and a hundred fifteen dollars an hour for any consultation preparation for presentation of any form of litigation or testimony. So I'm just asking for your approval of that.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, under the CDPG program, Wendy Leslie asks if I would present these items on her behalf. First, we're asking your approval to enter into agreement with Warden Engineering for the E. Claire Vero Coro sidewalk project. Your approval.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we'd like your approval to amend the cooperation agreement between the County of Butler and the Housing Authority of Butler County regarding the spotlight program.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
First item, under Commissioners, we're asking for approval of a maintenance agreement with Ezri for our GIS software support. This is in the Departments of Mapping, Emergency Services, IT, and Conservation District. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we would like to ask your approval of our recommendation to award the public official liability bonds to prison warden and clerk of courts to Mitchell Insurance. And the rate is, um, it is a four-year agreement. For the warden, it is one hundred dollars per year or a four-year prepaid payment of three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And for the clerk of courts, it's one hundred dollars per year or again, a prepaid four-year payment, a single payment of three hundred and twenty-five dollars. We'd like your approval.
I'll make the motion. I'll give the three twenty-five.
I'll second.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we would like your approval of our recommendation to award the tax collective bonds. We received one, uh, proposal. It was from Mitchell Insurance. Pardon me. One moment, Commissioners. That piece of paper has escaped. Here we are. We received one bid from Mitchell Insurance. There's a two percent increase from the rate four years ago. And the total is... I'm sorry, I don't have a total here.
Let this go then, you can round robin it.
Yes, we can round robin it.
All right, well, before we wrap this agenda...
That sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Next item, uh, we were anticipating our ability to make a recommendation to you for award of the tax anticipation note for 2014. We did receive twelve proposals and we're in the process of reviewing those now. We are close to a recommendation, but we'd like to complete our due diligence on this recommendation before we present that for your approval. So I would like to table that until the next public meeting.
Okay. Do we have to pass that to table? Uh, Mark, we haven't discussed it yet. I don't think we would like, we don't have to vote to table it, do we? Or do we... You should vote to table it. All right, motion to table?
I'd like to make a motion to table that until further review.
Okay. I'll second it. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Should we do the same with that tax block or bond then? Well, I think we'll, if you would like, but we're going to round robin that in between and...
Yes, we do have a recommendation on that, I just don't have available, then I figure just the, the amount.
All right. Next item, number five.
Next item, we're asking your approval of appointments of Willen Price, Nancy Penny, and Gina Sarnes to the Federated Library System Board of Directors.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we'd like your approval to adopt Resolution 2013 dash twenty-two. This is a supplemental appropriation for the Butler Transit Authority in the amount of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. This amount was budgeted in the 2013 budget and we are just completing the steps necessary to make that payment to the Transit Authority. We'd like your approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we'd like your approval to renew a contract with Midwest Employers Casualty Company for the county's excess workers' compensation and employer's liability policy. Personnel Director Lori Altman is here if there are any questions.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we'd like your approval for the chairman to execute the documents necessary to submit the application to DCED for the Home Owner Occupied Residential Rehabilitation Program, which targets the county's North Central tier.
I'll break to make the motion, please.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Just a note for record, for the record, the Board of Commissioners did approve the submission of this grant on December fourth at that public meeting, and this action is only required to authorize the chairman to execute the documents. Next, we would ask your approval for the chairman to execute correspondence, accepting the grant of three hundred thousand dollars from the Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Fund, known as the FAIR Fund, for the Terrace Apartments' Rental Demonstration Program. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all for your business, sir.
Motion to approve the budgetary transfers?
Send them.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, I'm sorry, aye.
Okay, motion to approve the new hires?
Send them.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. A motion to approve the trail requests?
Send them.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A motion to approve the acquisitions?
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. A motion to approve the check register?
Sound move.
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Reports, Jim?
Yes. Well, okay, my report this week is, last week at the Leadership Butler County Day, I spoke to a class of approximately 20 people. I requested speech to the class, which was comprised of adult business leaders wanting to enrich their knowledge of Butler County. I applaud that. Dale Pinkerton and I spoke to the group. Dale chose to speak first. My speech was on why state laws set up the counties with both majority and minority elected officials and the law's purpose. I spoke on what I've done as a minority commissioner during my term in office and gave four examples of my minority party issues. The examples were their desire to sell Sunnyview, keeping debt low, purchasing a used building instead of expenses involved in new construction, and saving the taxpayers 2.2 million by not having an extravagant indoor parking garage for the new proposed building, which includes financing and the cost of construction. Dale Pinkerton came up after my speech and rebutted my contention that good minority representation is good for our democracy. Dale Pinkerton got up and accused me of lying to the class on the issues and exclaimed that he would not debate me on the issue. A true debate on important county issues would have showed county government in action to a government leadership class. Thus, the class personally witnessed why Dale Pinkerton and Bill McCarrer breed dysfunctional government. The majority commissioners don't believe and have any strong, knowledgeable, open, and transparent minority party. They don't believe in debate and providing the results of due diligence and true facts to the public. A perfect example of this is the recent RFPs receiving this potential sale of Sunnyview. Their desire to cloak these bids and bidders' names in the bid amounts in a veil of secrecy is just like the NSA does. Bill McCarrer and Dale Pinkerton believe that anyone who disagrees with their viewpoint must be a liar. Then Mr. Pinkerton calls that person who sets forth with a different point of view and adolescent third grader, and Mr. McCarrer refers to him as one of those meaningless diatribes. Next, I'd like to present to the public one of those meaningless diatribes. I wrote this as a cover letter to my current newsletter surrounding the sale of Sunnyview for county residents called the Sunnyview Report, which they refer to as being illegal. Dear community members, in 1898, the citizens of Butler County had the compassion and foresight to purchase a county farm for those in the community in need at the hand up. This property became known as Sunnyview and housed those elderly who no longer worked their farms or attended shops, but were not blessed with children. Those community members also cared deeply about those less fortunate than they were, the blind, the physically disabled, those with dementia and other mental illnesses. Butler County was then and is now a church-going community. We were taught values in church of forgiveness, love, caring, and compassion for others, which would be with us our entire life. Let's reflect on what those in 1898 had in material possessions. Almost no one had indoor plumbing, public water, no public sewage. There was no electricity. There were no cars. There were no airplanes, washing machines, central heating, refrigerators, and no antibiotics yet. Yet they cared for those less fortunate. Look at what the majority of us have today by comparison. The vast majority of us are very fortunate. Can we not spare $10 to $20 a year to make sure our wonderful Sunnyview safety net remains a county-owned facility? I can afford this nominal amount, and consider it a privilege for me to carry on this tradition. Once gone, it will never be back. Bill McCarrer and Dale Pinkerton have made it their mission to divorce us from Sunnyview. The trouble is, most of us were married in the church and believed we should attend counseling, money management classes, and do everything in our power to hold our families together for the sake of our children, our schools, and our communities. Family values work in communities. It's proven with the test of time. Sunnyview's successful mission is proven for over 100 years. Bill McCarrer and Dale Pinkerton just want a divorce. I'm asking for your gift of kindness this holiday season for those in need of help. Show your support for Sunnyview or county's safety net, and reflect upon your compassion, morals, and ethics for others in our community. We need to continue to take care of our own. We cannot count on for-profit company to take care of our county residents regardless of their ability to pay. I can assure everyone that I wrote this letter. It was heartfelt and expressed my beliefs and those of the vast majority of my constituents. It was not the writing of a third grader. It was not giving a meaningless diatride. The public can decide that for themselves, though. It's not up to me. We already know Bill and Dale's opinion. To them, Sunnyview is a meaningless diatride. And I'd like to make two public announcements here. First, last week, Judge Kelly Scribe has given Dale Pinkerton and his attorneys full access to my home computer, my work computer, and that of my personal assistant's computer. If you want to send me anything confidential, please use the United States Postal Service. Please send to my home address, Jim X.9, 106 Marion Drive, Butler, PA, 16001. I believe Dale is now trying to expand his lawsuit, including using public funds, to produce my newsletters for county residents concerning county business, reflecting open, honest, and transparent government on my assistant's computer. Sure, Peggy helps me. I write it, and she helps me. Wow, an elected official producing a newsletter to inform and update the public on county business? I hope that Brian Ellison, Daryl Madcap don't get caught up in this thing, too. I think Dale Pinkerton and his law team are trying to emulate Ken Starr's investigation into Whitewater. The bad thing for them is, there's no Paula Jones or Monica Lewinsky in my past. I have nothing to hide. I'm worried about my constituents' privacy. They have none. Send me it in the mail. Second, I'd like to inform the residents of Butler County and employees of Sunnyview. Last week, when the Board of Governors meeting was canceled, I had nothing to do with it. I think this action denied access to handicapped residents to speak with the Commissioners. I regret that it happened, and I assure you I had nothing to do with this action. Thank you very much.
Bill?
Well, I'd just like to take this time, and unfortunately, Jack has loved to tell him thank you for the years of service he gave us to control of Butler County. And the other thing that I would like to do is wish everyone in Butler County a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I hope that everything goes well for you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
The well from which Jim X.9 derives his derogatory remarks about Dale and I seems to be bottomless, but so be it. I too would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Remember the reason for this season. Thank you. All right, it's Congress time with the media. Hello?
I have some questions about salary board. Do you want me to wait till after or ask them? Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
That's okay.
All of you people.
I'm just a little confused on it. So, the motion did not pass?
Well, it did and it didn't. The motion passed to everybody except those row officers who were here. See, a row officer is on the salary board that involves their department.
Okay.
So Diane and Rich and Mike, they voted in favor of that motion. So their departments will receive the 3% increase for non-salary employees. The rest of the county will not until further actions taken.
Will the management positions receive the increase, or just the people in their office?
Just the people in their office. The management positions in their office. The other people are union. They're going to receive the increase under the union contract.
Now, can their other row officers who weren't here today make a motion in the future?
They can come back at a future meeting and make a motion that their non-union employees will receive the 3% or any percent they want to propose. They could make any kind of motion they like.
Okay. And the salary study being done, when will that be complete? And is that looking at both union and non-union salaries?
Can I answer that now? Not on the union. It's only on, it's not on the union employees. It's not management. And it's not on elected officials either.
Right. When is that expected to be completed?
We're waiting now on the last portion of it. As soon as that's in, then we'll start going through it and reviewing it, applying it.
Okay. Thank you for clearing it up. And also, on the proposals for Sunnyview, are you commenting on how many you've received[1628.13]